Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting. It is Tuesday, December 2nd, 2025 at 6:00 p.m. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation. We have Pastor Chris Himmelmann here from First City Church at 1908 Lloyd Street. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, ununderguised, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you please pray with me? Father, we thank you for your continued provision for our city. And as we enter into this last month of the year, pray that you would continue to give this council wisdom as they make decisions for the good of our city. And pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Himmelmann. I'll call the meeting to order. Susan, would you take a roll call, please?
Yes, I will. Councilwoman Welch.
Here.
Councilwoman Preister.
Here.
Councilwoman Casey.
Here.
Councilwoman Burns.
Here.
Councilwoman Collins.
Here.
And Councilman McCaw.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall of the council chambers. Item 5, Approval of Agenda Consent Agenda Claims and Advisory Committee Reports, 5A. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve the agenda.
Second, motion by Burns, second by Prester. Any comments or questions? Please vote. Thank you. Item 5B, Approval of the Consent Agenda. Items marked with an Ask risk are approved where this item is unless otherwise removed. Do I have a motion? Councilman Prester?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Prester, second by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. Do I have, let's see, Item 6, Approval of Claims, do I have a motion? Councilman Casey?
Thank you, Mayor. Make a motion to approve the claims.
Motion by Casey, second by Prester. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. Item 7, Special Presentations. We have two this evening. Start with 7A, Gro Sarpay Third Quarter Update. Lisa Shivi, Executive Director for Gro Sarpay.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for letting me be here this evening to present our third quarter information. Hard to believe that, starting the month of December, but the year's gone by, gone by fast, so I will go through our third quarter report and then a few additional pieces and then open it up for any questions that you might have for me, as I think there's some more important things on the agenda this evening. So, things have gone well during the third quarter. We did land two additional projects. I had high hopes that we would be able to have one of those be in Bellevue, but we're still working through some details. So hopefully next year we'll be able to have something on there to be able to report on. But growth within the county continues to progress, and I think that's one of the important pieces on it. We continue to have a healthy project pipeline of new-to-market and existing industry. We'll touch on that just in a little bit. We continue to have good community engagement. That's something that was really important for the organization to make sure we are out, being visible, meeting with companies, really establishing those relationships. So, those are a couple of the highlights, I would say, from our third quarter progress report, as well as the building permit report that was submitted to you in your packet. Something else I wanted to share with you, I've been sharing this at each of the communities, as well as at the county. At the beginning of October, we had the opportunity to attend an event called Site Selector Guild. And it's with national site selectors from all across the country. It's an opportunity to engage with them one-on-one, to have conversations around economic development within our communities and what that looks like. And there were a couple of key takeaways from that event that I wanted to share with you this evening. Those three things are risk, readiness, and reputation. They're really trying to find ways to minimize risk for their clients, so trying to find ways to speed up processes. So, it's important for us to do due diligence work on different sites, different areas that we want to continue to see growth, so that they're prepared, so to be showcased to site selectors or different developers, so that we can minimize the risk. Falling into the next piece, which is readiness, making sure that we're ready to answer questions, have timelines in place. And then also reputation. People want to go where they are welcomed. And so, making sure that we're going after the correct things that are going to be welcoming in each of our communities, as well as throughout the county. And over the last year, that's really something that we've worked really hard with on city staff, is to really understand the needs of what the community of Bellevue is looking for, and how you want to be able to continue to grow, because all of those pieces are important. So, a couple of things that we wanted to share with you on that. It was a good opportunity, again, to have one-on-one conversations, to hear what's taking place nationally, and how that relates maybe back to here locally as well, how we can attribute some of that. So, it was a good event, a good conversations. It is allowing us to really do some additional marketing one-on-one to these site selectors, because we've opened up those relationships. So, letting them know that we have things available, different sites, that the Good Life District is moving forward, different pieces like that. Instead of sending them mass emails, just trying to send them some kind of personalized message, so they know about different opportunities and maybe what their clients are looking for, and if we have a need, that's there for them. So, that's what I wanted to share with you this evening. I can elaborate further on different topics, but I open it up for any questions you might have of me.
Any questions for Lisa? Just, Lisa, just one question. Five years ago, it seemed like there was a lot of warehousing being built out west, and last couple of years, I've seen some buildings sit in vacant for a couple of years. Is there still people looking for that type of space?
So, the top three things that we see that come in as far as RFPs is still distribution and warehousing space, manufacturing, and then we are starting to see an increase back in office, which we have not seen that for quite some time, since probably 2019. We haven't seen those kinds of numbers. So, those are still the top three. We do have some speculative space that is still unoccupied in some of the warehousing, but it still is a top need. I think just trying to understand the market and what clients are looking for is from a size and scope, will help us be able to find the best tenant for those opportunities.
And then, any interest in data centers lately, or is that slowed down?
There are still interest in data centers, but that's a conversation that we've tried to take to each community and ask, is this something that you're looking for, or that you're wanting, especially throughout the county? The interest is still there, but finding the right places for them is probably not something that we're going to align with right now. And it goes back to understanding the risk, readiness, and reputation, making sure that we understand where things want to go and be there. We will continue to support the existing industries that we have here and that have located here, but as of right now, we're not proactively seeking that.
All right. Thanks for the report. Item 7, Special Presentations, 7B, kind of special presentation, because we usually do this in a different format. This is kind of nice that we're doing it here. So, we have the badge presentation and penning and oath of office for firefighter candidates, Anthony Bishop and Colin Campbell. So, if I ask the chief or one of the chiefs to come forward and just kick us off, and I'll be glad to come up and swear them in.
Good evening. My name is Steve Wagner. I'm Assistant Chief with Bellevue Fire Department. This evening, we're pinning the badges on firefighters Campbell and Bishop. They've just completed a very rigorous eight-week academy. We're very excited to have them on the streets. They've done especially well. Captain Rogers, would you like to give a few words on the academy?
Good evening. My name is Captain Anthony Rogers with the Fire Training Bureau. These candidates have spent the past eight weeks in a very rigorous onboarding process. So, they would start their day at 7:00 in the morning, and this was a joint venture with Papillion and with Off-It Fire. And they would start their day with some rigorous physical training, jogging, some rigorous workouts, just so they can get prepared for the amount of training that was going to take place. They've done fire evolutions, a lot of EMS calls, a little bit of what we would call technical rescues, so car accidents and so forth, to prepare them for their first day of work. And one of them, firefighter Campbell, started yesterday. Firefighter Bishop starts tomorrow, and we will have lots more of special rescue techniques that we're going to present to them. So, this is just the very beginning of their training process. We look forward to spending a lot more time with them. They came onboard with some experience from Metro and so forth with fire education, with EMS education, but we're going to give them even more. We feel ready, though, that they are ready to answer the call. Just to give you a little example of how prepared they are, one of our challenges to them is that they be able to don all of their protective gear under a certain time limit. Now, the national standard is two and a half minutes, but these candidates have completed that drill in 40 seconds. Going from their street clothes into their protective gear with their SCBA on, ready to go. So, that's a good demonstration of their commitment to answering the call when it comes. If there's any questions about...
Thank you for that introduction. Councilwoman Welch?
Just a quick question. Is this training they're doing, is it different than what your other candidates have done to become firefighters? Or is it the same training that the rest of the crews have gone through?
This is the same training that the rest of the crews have gone through. What is a little bit different is the crews are obviously doing continuing education as they progress, but this is the same basic start to all of the candidates' careers. But what these candidates have coming in the near future, some special rescues, like rope rescue, confined space rescue, trench rescue, some water rescue techniques, they have a lot more to get up to speed with the rest of the department, but they're on a good start.
So typically, we have a bigger penning group. That's happened. And so, is this, the penning that's happening for this group as of this time of year, these two? Because typically, it's way more than this that we have.
Yeah. This particular opportunity is just a little bit smaller, just because we have fewer personnel to recognize, but I'm sure in the near future, there will be more ceremonies with bigger turnout.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any more questions? All right. Well, we are totally confident in our fire department, and we know your training is going to be second to none, so we're proud to swear you in here. And I'm going to come up and do that right now. So, raise your right hand, please. I.
Anthony Bishop.
Colin Campbell.
On the second day of December 2025. Just repeat after me.
On the second day of December 2025.
On the second day of December 2025.
You can do it at the same time. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
And without mental reservation.
And without mental reservation.
Or for purpose of evasion.
Or for purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties.
And that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties.
Of the Office of Firefighter.
Of the Office of Firefighter.
Of the City of Bellevue.
Of the City of Bellevue.
In the County of Sarpay, Nebraska.
In the County of Sarpay, Nebraska.
According to law and to the best of my ability.
According to law and the best of my ability.
And I do further swear that I do not advocate.
And I do further swear that I do not advocate.
Nor am I a member of any political party.
Nor am I a member of any political party.
Or organization that advocates.
Or organization that advocates.
The overthrow of the Government of the United States.
The overthrow of the Government of the United States.
Of this state by force or violence.
Of this state by force or violence.
And that during such time.
And that during such time.
As I am in this position.
As I am in this position.
I will not advocate nor become a member.
I will not advocate nor become a member.
Of any political party or organization.
Of any political party or organization.
That advocates the overthrow of the Government.
That advocates the overthrow of the Government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
Or of this state by force or violence.
Or of this state by force or violence.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
And we're going to have the penning, and so, Anthony A.J. Bishop is going to be penned by his fiancee, Sierra Campbell. And you can both come up. Colin Campbell is going to be penned by his grandfather, George Wachler.
They don't do this every day.
Can I have the family come up? We'll just take a couple of quick pictures. Old family's fine.
Firefighter Campbell first.
Good.
Firefighter Bishop second.
All right. Back to business. Item 8, we have organizational matters. 8C, Election of the City Council President in 2026. Motion is needed to vote by secret ballot. So, do I have a motion? Councilman Casey?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to nominate Councilman Jerry McCaw as our next president.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Casey, second by Collins, to nominate Jerry McCaw. Are there any other nominations? Okay. Seeing no nominations, I'll take a vote. So, we have motion by Casey, second by Collins. Please vote.
All voting in favor, motion carries.
All right. Congratulations. Council President McCaw.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll do what I can to keep us moving forward.
Can we give it to the person we like the least?
Then we're in good shape.
Now you tell me. You got big shoes to fill. Good job, and you'll do good. See, Item 9, Approved Citizen Communication, we did not receive any requests. Item 10, Liquor License is none. Item 11, Ordinances for Adoption, third reading, we have none this evening. Item 12, Ordinances for Public Hearing, second reading, 12A Ordinance Number 4200, Updated Compensation Ordinance. And Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance Number 4200, An Ordinance of the City of Bellevue, Nebraska, Classifying the Employees of the City, Providing a Pay Range Scale, Providing for Publication in Pamphlet Form, Repealing Ordinance Number 4193, and Providing for an Effective Date.
Thank you, and I will open up Ordinance Number 4200 for public hearing. Is there anyone here wanting to speak regarding said ordinance? Anyone wanting to speak, please come forward. Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing. The third reading will be December 16th, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. here in the council chambers. Item 13, Ordinances for Introduction, first reading, we have none this evening. Item 14, Public Hearings on Matters Other Than Ordinances, we have none. Item 15, Resolutions, we have none. Must be the holidays. Item 16, Current Business. 16A, Approve and Authorize the Mayor to the Redevelopment Agreement and Redevelopment Promissory Note, Allowing Up to $1,500,000 Plus Accrued Interest to Offset TIF Eligible Expenses for GLC Wilshire Housing, Inc., Redevelopment Project Located at 1724 Wilshire Drive, Tax Lot 6, Tillers Fourth Addition to the City of Bellevue, Sarpay County, Nebraska. Do I have a motion? Councilwoman Collins?
Thank you, Mayor. Make a motion to approve Item 16A.
Second.
Motion by Collins, second by McCaw. Any comments or questions?
All voting in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. Item 16B, Recommend Approval of Purchase Request to Buy One 2026 Ford Explorer Police Cruiser from Anderson Ford in the Amount of the State Contract Bid Not to Exceed $44,113. Do I have a motion? Councilwoman Collins?
Thank you, Mayor. Make a motion to approve Item 16B.
I'll second that.
Motion by Collins, second by Welch. Any comments or questions?
All voting in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. Item 16C, Approve and Authorize the Mayor to Sign the Professional Services Agreement with JEO Consulting Group, Inc., for Engineering Services in an Amount Not to Exceed $54,010. Do I have a motion? Councilman Casey?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve Item 16C.
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by Collins. Any comments or questions?
All voting in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. Item 16D, Approve and Authorize the Mayor to Sign the Temporary Easement Contract with Midwest Right-of-Way for Whitted Creek 25th Street Project from Linwood to Blackhawk for Track 17 in an Amount Not to Exceed $910. Do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Make a motion to approve Item 16D.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Collins. Any comments or questions?
All voting in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. Item 16E, Approve and Authorize the Mayor to Sign the Agreement with Stanley J. Howe Architects to Develop Architectural Plans and Engineering Coordination for the Police Training Facility in an Amount Not to Exceed $131,500. Do I have a motion? Councilwoman Collins?
Thank you, Mayor. Make a motion to approve Item 16E.
I'll second that.
Motion by Collins, second by Welch. Any comments or questions? Councilman Prester?
Turn my mic on. Thank you, Mayor. Chief, if I could get you to give us a little information on timeline and what you're looking at in this, and maybe also where the current training has been taking place?
Yeah, absolutely. First of all, Ken Clary, Police Chief here in Bellevue, I know you all know that, but anyway, as far as where we currently train, there is a range down on Harlan Lewis that, or just off of Harlan Lewis, that we currently train at. If you recall, though, a few months back, in the land exchange with Bellevue University, what used to be Premier Sports Village, we traded some land so the university could build out down there. Part of that arrangement was for them to build the berms for future training facility for us, so that currently, we're under lease. We could lose that lease at any time. We did sign one additional year for 2026 to train at that site while this site's being built out. But the money that is going into this portion is coming out of CIP, which is dedicated, I believe it was roughly just over $550,000, I think it was $556,000, dedicated to building out that site, which would be the preliminary work, which is this bill, along with some dirt work, flat work, including bringing in utilities and concrete to that facility. Eventually, next year, the hope is to get money to build a building there, which would be an indoor training facility for use force, force-on-force type training, to go along with the outdoor range facility that's been designed. It's going to be state-of-the-art. It is three different ranges, one for static shooting, for qualification shoots, standing on a line shooting, approximately 24 lanes, which is about twice our current capacity. And then, we'll have a dynamic range where you'll be able to move and shoot around obstacles like vehicles, things like that, more real-life scenario-type training. And then, beside that is a 400-meter rifle range, which really, there's nothing like it in the region. I think the longest rifle range in the region currently is about 200 yards, so it'll give us capabilities we currently don't have, that will be ours, that we'll be able to maintain and bring in the highest level training in the area. We've already got people asking us when they'll be able to train there as well. So, I hope that answers your question.
That does give me some additional information, yes. And as I was listening... That, that does give me some additional information, yes. And, as I was listening to that, the other question escaped me, so I may ask you later.
Okay. I'd be glad to answer any questions anybody has.
Any other questions, or Chief? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Motion by Collins, second by Welch. No further questions. Please vote.
All voting in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. Item 16F, approve to order and purchase a 2026 Ford Expedition in an amount not to exceed $54,692. Do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Make a motion to approve item 16F.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Collins. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. Item 16G, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the sub-license agreement with Project Play Holdings for the use of Mattel Brands at the Bellevue Bay Water Park for a 10-year period, in an amount not to exceed $250,000. And we had a request to go into closed session, so pass that over to Council, Councilman Casey.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that the city council go into closed session at this time for protection of public interest. The subject matter to be discussed in closed session includes real estate and negotiations with respect to sub-license agreement with Project Play Holdings LLC. The following individuals be included in the portion of the closed session. Mayor Rusty Hyke, Jim Risto, Rich Casey, Thomas Burns, Julie Collins, Jerry McCaw, Don Prester, Kathy Welch, Amy Battalion, Tony King, Jason Tordoff, and Harrison Johnson.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Councilwoman Welch. So, we have motion to go into closed session by Councilman Casey, and second by Welch. Is there any discussion or questions? All right. Please vote.
All voting in favor, motion carries.
Thank you. It is now 6:32 PM, and we will be going into closed session, which will take place here in council chambers. Matters to be discussed in closed session shall be limited to real estate and negotiations with respect to the sub-license agreement with Project Play Holdings LLC for the protection of public interest.